El escenario ya está listo, mi estimado Carlos de Castillo. Estamos preparados para este gran debate. La gente ya está llegando, como ustedes pueden ver al fondo, y todo el equipo de Radio Global está unido en esta transmisión, porque es importante escuchar todo lo que tienen que decir los concejales sobre la ciudad de Brooks. Todo lo que se les ha planteado en temas de seguridad, en temas de infraestructura, en temas de deportes, de eventos, de espectáculos. Hay tantas cosas que abarca la ciudad de Brooks, que hoy escucharemos esa respuesta, Carlos de Castillo.
Yes, so everything is almost ready, as everybody can see, we have a almost full house. And because people really want to know what's going on. People want to know what is the thought about the candidates for councillor and also candidates for mayor. So right now, the community needs to know what happened with areas like safety, like economy, like infrastructure. All of these things is very important because we need to know who are the people that is running the city and the area very soon, in October, is going to be the elections.
Es correcto. ¿Hay algo que me llama la atención para que ustedes, los que nos están viendo a través de esta plataforma, entiendan un poco cuando nosotros, por ejemplo, en Latinoamérica, Carlos, hablemos de Colombia. Una persona que quiere ser concejal, que quiere ser alcalde, que quiere ser gobernador, que quiere ser... Se mueve mucho dinero, pero realmente en Brooks es como una vocación. ¿Si? No hay ese factor, es decir, con solo decirles que un concejal acá puede ganar mucho menos de lo que gana un obrero en Canadá. Entonces, para que ustedes dimensionen que realmente la vocación de un consejo, de un alcalde, o más bien el tener ese cargo, es más una vocación que un trabajo o ir a pensar de que van a hacer alguna, como hacen en nuestros países, un robo o en fin, tantas cosas que se presentan. Aquí es más vocación. Entonces, la gente se preocupa mucho por preguntar el tema de cómo deberían funcionar toda la infraestructura de una ciudad y se enfocan en otros temas. Pero como cosa importante que llama mucho la atención es que gana más una persona que trabaja en cualquier otro trabajo que un gobernante de la misma ciudad, como para tener en cuenta.
That's true, that's true. So it's very interesting that here in Canada, this is just a service. So people just put the passion on it. Because it's not about money. Really, it's not about money because we can see examples that, let's say for instance, a councillor makes less money than a teacher or the councillor less make, less money than any, any kind of job, regular job. So the reason is because here is the vacation, is the service and the passion that these people just put in the city. So yeah, it's very, very interesting because in our countries, it's different. So in our countries, they have another kind of situation and they make different kind of money. But here, it's just the service and it's just that purpose and that passion that every single one, as a matter of fact, they have another jobs. Because they don't rely on the income that they make as a councillor or politician. They have another jobs that is going to be healthy for them and for the cash flow.
Pues, en pocos minutos vamos a estarles mostrando lo que va a suceder con este equipo de concejales en este gran debate.
So in a few minutes, we're gonna just show you. So what's going on in this debate will be very interesting. Because Nelson was talking about earlier that we're gonna talk about topics like safety, like economy, like infrastructure. What is going on with all of these topics? Which right now, they are the most important topics for newer region in Brooks specifically.
Ya regresamos.
And while we don't receive government support or subsidies to operate, I can attest to our investment that we've made locally here in Brooks. We just concluded our last fiscal year on August 31st and I'm proud to say that we as a chamber invested over $109,000 back into the Brooks Newell region last year alone. The investment. The investment of time and expense is something we're invested in because we truly want to support the business community of Southeast Alberta. We don't want any business left behind. We're here to help you succeed and as our success grows for your chamber in the Brooks Newell region, the money will also be reinvested here too. We're pleased to be able to represent one person and home-based businesses to large corporations and we've been doing so for 125 years. I heard a quote a couple of years back that a chamber of commerce is the most powerful powerless organization because we don't create the legislation or policy decisions of government, but we do work to try to influence those decisions, to work towards our vision of being a leading advocacy organization for our businesses and a catalyst for growth and prosperity in Southeast Alberta. Our mission is to empower and support our business community through our connections, support and influence, providing innovative solutions and fostering a vibrant, inclusive and thriving economic environment in Southeast Alberta. We're here to support and advocate for our members to foster regional growth and prosperity. We believe in integrity, collaboration, innovation, inclusivity, advocacy, engagement and excellence in all that we do. We're pleased to be able to expand our support to the Brooks Newell region. We know it's not always easy, but we are pleased that you're open and willing to have us come in and support this community. The request came to us in 2023 and we also acknowledge and always want to support the unique identity of all of the different regions and municipalities that we represent and we want to provide that support to each of you. You can find out more through southeastalbertachamber.ca and visit our advocacy page to check out our advocacy insights in our 2025 Vote Prosperity campaign. We also hope you'll come see us at the trade show this weekend. We have the trade show at the JBS Centre from October 3rd to 5th and we have over 100 exhibitors to showcase for you here this weekend. We'd also like to extend a very special thanks to E-Radio Global for recording this. So you'll be able to, if you don't yet subscribe to their YouTube channel, please go and subscribe and like and share their content because it's fantastic. They recently did a mayoral debate that was quite good as well. So we thank them for their membership and their support in our chamber. Thank you so much. Now, for tonight, I'm sure you've heard enough. I mean, we'll be hearing from our councillor candidates and our mayoral candidates as they explain their positions on a variety of issues facing our city, while also explaining their qualifications and experience that have led them to vie for a position to help govern the city of Brooks. As a non-partisan organization, the chamber is proud to advocate for openness and transparency at all levels of government. We encourage our members and the community to take a vested interest in electing your representatives and who will represent the city over the next four years and be sure to make an informed voting decision. We sincerely appreciate all those who are taking their time out of your busy schedules to join us here this evening and we thank all of our online viewers as well for taking the time to watch the forums over the next few weeks. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Grant Jensen. Grant was born and raised in the small town of Edberg in central Alberta, completing his bachelor of education in 1984. He later his MA in integrated studies with a focus on global change. After graduating from university, he began his teaching career at Brooks composite high school, teaching social studies and in 1999, Grant moved into administration, ultimately becoming the principal at Brooks composite high in 2004 until his retirement in 2017. As a teacher and administrator, he served on several provincial advisory and working committees with Alberta Education. He also has been a sessional instructor at Medicine Hat College, teaching both history and globalization. Since retirement, Grant has worked as an ESL instructor at BICAP and has volunteered extensively in the community. He is active in the local rotary club where he has served as president and youth director and he volunteers with Global Village and BCIS, serving in their mentorship program. He's also active in his local church. Grant is married to Kathleen. They have three children, all of them teachers. And in his spare time, Grant enjoys traveling, walking, golfing, yard work, reading and spending time with his two granddaughters. I don't think he has a whole lot of spare time outside of that. So join me in welcoming to the stage, Grant Jensen.
I am honored to be moderating tonight's event for the chamber and all electoral candidates were provided an opportunity to grant consent to the Chamber of Commerce to receive an invitation to participate in our forums and were free to accept or decline the invitation. We do recognize that Mayor Nesbit had previous travel commitments that kept her from attending the forum this evening. But she has indicated that she would be happy to respond to questions that you might have prior to the election. So before we begin tonight's debate, I would like to take a moment to explain the rules which all candidates have already agreed. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement before we proceed to the question and debate portion of tonight's event. On the topics presented, each candidate will have one minute to respond to a question that will be asked through all candidates. Follow-up questions may be asked, to which they will also have one minute to respond. During tonight's question and answer period, I may open the floor to debate following a particular topic to a maximum of four minutes per topic. As a matter of decorum during the debate, I would ask that the candidates please address statements and questions to the moderator relevant to the audience or to each other. And finally, each candidate will have the opportunity to make a closing statement at the end of the program. This forum is structured in a manner that allows equal opportunity for all candidates to express their political views and their plans for action and the effect that this will have on our community. The structure of this forum allows you, as an audience, to hear from each candidate equally so that you can make an informed decision on October 20th. With the number of candidates growing in this year's municipal election and the time that we have together, we are limited to how many questions can be asked. So we will be providing any additional questions to the candidates following the forums. And any responses received will be posted to our website as they are received. And you can go to www.southeastalbertachamber to see those if they're posted. And finally, for the audience, I would ask you, please refrain from participating in the forum in any other way or in any way other than by quiet observation. Please hold any applause or comments until the end of the forum. This is for your benefit as we have a lot of information to get through and any interruption will lessen the time that we have available to hear from our candidates. So at this time, if you have a cell phone with you, please take a moment to please make sure that it is silent. Thank you. And finally, we will be accepting written questions from the audience this evening, which will be collected by chamber volunteers and they will be delivered to designated forums crew mirrors. If you have a question that you'd like to submit, please hold up your hand during the debate and they will be collected by a volunteer. The volunteers also have paper and pencils if you should require it. The questions may or may not be included in our program this evening at my discretion and based on the amount of time that we have available. So now, without further ado, I would like to invite the audience to join me in welcoming to the stage the 2025 council candidates for the city of Brooks. Carly Bryant. Chad Faltenberg. Clayton Hett. Mohamed Idris. Jackie Johnson. Ryan Skippy-Bobs. Anne-Marie Phillipsen. Paul Post. Mike Rager. And Marissa Wardra. Please welcome them. So the first portion of our forum this evening is to provide the candidates an opportunity to just introduce themselves and to make an opening statement. And each candidate will have one minute and we have a timer here that they can be looking at and hopefully they can see it. We're going to do this in alphabetical order. So we'll start first with candidate Aurelio.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angelica Aurelio. I came to Brooks in 2010 along with my three young kids to reunite with my husband, who has been working as a lead father at the new plant. Now my kids are adults. My eldest is actively a teacher at CTK. My second one has finished her degree in psychology and is pursuing her grad studies. My youngest is also taking up education and is in her third year at University of Letbridge. My husband is currently the operations manager of GPS. I have my Bachelor of Arts in community development. I have my Bachelor of Law. I'm actually working towards my Masters in public administration and I also have an immigration consultant diploma. I have been working for a nonprofit organization for 15 years. I am also the president of the Brooks Folk Club of the community. I am the vice-chair of Arts, Culture and Heritage Board and also the board member with Inclusion and Volunteering Committee. I am running because I want all voices in Brooks to be represented in the council.
Thank you, candidate Aurelio. Candidate Bryant.
My name is Carly Bryant. I've spent most of my 30 years in Duffis, now president of Brooks. You might know me by my maiden name, Carly Capevine. I worked as a legal assistant in Brooks and employment advisor before going to college and graduating with honors in wildlife and fisheries conservation. Then I came back to Brooks, where I had both my kids here at the Brooks Hospital and now I'm just working on raising them.
Thank you. Candidate Faltenberg.
Chad Faltenberg. Born and raised here in Brooks, Alberta. Went to school in Calgary for three years, like a lot of kids do after high school. Got a marketing diploma from Sates. Decided to move back here because I got tired of the city. Came back to work in our family business, the cat scripture company. I'm now one of yours. I have now three children, married with three children. Oldest is currently attending the University of Alberta. I'm very proud of him. Also proud of all my kids, but... My daughter is currently figure skating here in Brooks and my youngest is playing football in Medicine Hat because there is no way we won't do it. So I'd love to speak on that, but it's all in my brain.
Thank you. Candidate Hett.
Hello, I'm Clayton Hett. I grew up on a park just north of Brooks. I moved here in 1994. I started a career in the oil field. I started my first small business in 2005, still working in a small family business here in Brooks. I graduated from Sates with an engineering, petroleum engineer technologist degree and my son Hunter goes to school here in the junior high. My reasons for wanting to be your councillor is I want to bring safety to the city of Brooks and I want the streets to be like they were when I was here, where you could ride a bike around and not worry about people. I want the city funded, parks and areas to be clean and monitored better. I want transparency on our government spending to the people and I want to work on athletic tourism, football, soccer field. Same as Chad, more safe.
Thank you. Candidate Idris.
Thank you. And thank you to the Chamber for organizing this. My name is Mohamed Idris and I'm asking for your vote to get my second term on city council. My family and I have made Brooks home for the last 20 years. This community has been very little to us and I always want to give back to the community. During 20 years, I have sat on numerous boards, whether locally, provincially, nationally. I sat on the project board, I sat on the library board, I sat on the housing board. And this is all, this all comes from the idea of service to yourself. I grew up in a home where service is something that you have to live in. You have to be able to provide to the community that kids do, as much as that community needs to. And what I'm trying to do is the same. I would love to have your vote and I hope I can make it from my stand. Thank you.
Candidate Johnson.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to the chamber for having us. My name is Jackie Johnson and I'm hoping to earn your vote for our next Brooks City Council. I have lived in Brooks for 18 years. Prior to coming to Brooks, I worked at the House of Commons in Ontario before. So I do have a unique perspective on government and how it should be run. For the last 11 years, I've been helping here in Brooks, in our safety management, where I provide safety consulting to the oil and gas industry, which give me a unique opportunity to speak to many companies within the oil and gas construction industries and hopefully get a really unique perspective on what we needed from business owners for us to help with infrastructure and economic development. I have two girls that graduated from St. Joseph's. Mine is 25, one's 23. One decided to join the oil and gas industry and is a fourth-year electrical apprentice in that industry. I also have my mom living with me, who is a doll if you ever get to meet her.
Sorry, that's time.
I'll tell you more about her.
Candidate Moss.
Hello, my name is Ryan Mobs. I'm also called Skippy. Moved to Brooks in 1999. Came here only for a short amount of time, I thought. Fell in love with the city and state. Met a woman here and we had a couple of great kids. They grew up here. Why I want to run, why I want to be your councillors? I want to give back to Brooks. It's given me so much over the years. I've had a few businesses that some succeeded, some failed. But that's the nature of being part of your city. I sat on the board of Ashen's place and viewed back there. I was part of the coach, assistant coach for the Brooks Pupils and have tried to give back over the years and this just feels like the natural next step for me to be here and be involved and to continue on with these great people that are up here. So I hope that I can show you that I genuinely didn't want to do and earn that vote. Thank you.
Candidate Phillips.
My name is Anne-Marie Phillipsen and I'm a longtime resident of the Brooks region. Most of those years were in the county of Newell and the last four years in the city of Brooks. In the county of Newell, I was a councillor for five terms. So I'm familiar with Newport Lodge, FCSS, regional water and also regional planning. Planning and development and economic development go hand in hand. You've got to do long-term planning. You've got to know where the affordable housing and industry and business is going to go with a lot of parking and a lot of green space. And then if the conditions are right, investors will come. Recreation is also a big item for each city, but it's an essential one. If you want to attract professionals like doctors, if you want youth to stay, you need to have trails, you need to have soccer fields, you need to have a pool and ice hockey arena in good shape. Only a team player and...
And candidate Post.
Thank you, Grant. My name is Paul Post. And I came to Brooks for the first time in 1980. I was stationed here as a recruiter in the RCMB. I spent 30 years in the RCMB and 23 of those years I was stationed in Brooks. I was stationed here two terms. While I was in Brooks, I was able to have four businesses while I was in Brooks and long enough in Brooks, I just made my home and I've been longer in Brooks than anywhere else in my life and proud to be here. My goal is to be, make Brooks a safer community, work with the RCMB, work with the bylaws, make it safer for our community, make it safe for our children and make it a lot safer for our community to work together. And I also was on the Parks and Recreation Board in 1984.
Candidate Ray.
Hello, my name is Mike Rager and I'm running for city council to make a difference. I've been interacting with the community these last probably a couple of weeks, 200 doors and lots of customers and I've heard lots of concerns and those are the concerns that I have myself. Been reporting here, I've seen a change in the community and this is our new community that we adapt to, more than adapt to and it should be, it should be very flawless to do that if we open up the communication with colleagues and open up the ability to grow with people on council here. Five, five plus myself, but I think do it together, we'd be successful in what we do, bringing our skill sets to council.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Ford.
Hi, my name is Marissa Wardra. I am a current city councillor. I was elected in 2021. I am an OG Brooks resident. I was born here. I grew up here. I lived in Calgary and Lushburg. I got my education. I have a Bachelor of Arts in Social Sciences. I'm interested in political science, history and native studies. And I also have a Bachelor of Education with distinction. I have worked for rest in public schools for the last 12 years and I live here with my husband and our two kids. I love Brooks and I have really enjoyed working for you for the last four years. And there's a lot more left to do. We are in a period of growth and change and I feel like I am closely connected to the community and able to bring that perspective and that love for Brooks and work for the best of, of all of us.
And we have a topic, our first topic, and the candidates haven't heard any of this before. So you might want to get your pens and paper out and jot down a few ideas. But our first topic is to find out more about your experience. So the question is, why are you running for this election? What qualifications and experience do you have that set you apart as a councillor through your volunteer work or through your business involvement? And we're going to answer these, the candidates will answer these in random order. And so we'll start with candidate Hett.
Some of my prior experience, I started in my flip of career when I was in high school, at New Brunswick School. I was the student union president there until graduation. I've been a leader at work. I've been a... Oh, I'm sorry. One of our businesses we run is our head admin. We do reclamation projects. I've managed over $70 million in two-year space. We gave the government back $18 million, came in under budget. So I'm fiscally responsible with large budgets. Well, as at Sates, I was also the Indigenous Student Alliance chief, is what was the title. I would be the president. Is what was the title, I would be the president. And I looked after a student body of over 2,000 people and their interests. And yeah, that's my sort of last story, so. Thank you. Candidate Pedros.
Thank you. I do bring a lot of experience to my work, whether it is governance, whether it is education, whether it is network profit and volunteering. From a educational background, I have a Masters in Human Security and Peacebuilding, Strategy Studies. And I use that a lot in my work in the community, whether it's committee building or for economic development. As my colleague here or my friend here said, I was president of the student union in my university. I started at council for four years. I was appointed by the province on the Canadian Health College Board of Maintenance. I was the vice-chair of the board managing, actually specifically the policy for Tocqueville. I was the chair of the policy for Canadian Health College. I was the chair of the library board for nine years. I was also appointed by the province on the Child and Family Services Authority Board. I was on the board for about nine years. I also advised the RCMB Commissioner to play the committee hotel for six years.
Thank you. Candidate Brian.
And like I stated, I worked as a legal assistant at the BID Law Office in Brooks for just 30 years. Just for the three years. I worked in the YMCA employment office here in Brooks for a year before going to school, where I met my husband. And I raised him up here, he's not a Brooks guy, but we both love it here. We've had our kids here, we're raising our kids here. I am the most inexperienced here. I haven't sat on boards, I haven't done a lot of volunteering, but I'm a quick study, and I think that council needs some fresh eyes, some new blood, some young blood. I'm currently a stay-at-home mom raising my kids. I fill them with my monkeys, because they're pretty wild. But we love Brooks, and I hope that we stay here, we retire here, and I can help make it a place that we all are proud of.
Thank you. Candidate Warder.
Thanks. I think first and foremost, my experience teaching has, yeah, first and foremost, my experience teaching has brought me a wealth of experience about how to go about serving my community. As a teacher, I am directly connected with all kinds of different, not just children, but their family. We know the effects of affordability of housing, of how to navigate social services, where the gaps are in recreation, how people feel about their community, how connected we are or disconnected we are. And that experience, as well as dealing with people, working as a team, I think that's a part that hasn't been mentioned so far. But collaborating and working as a part of a team, listening to other people is a critical part of the job, and you need experience in that.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
So as I mentioned, I run my own business. I have done that in the city of Brooks for the last 11 years. So anybody that has started their own small business or has attempted to knows that we have to work sometimes on very tight budgets. So I'm a lot of budgeting. I also had two teenage kids, so budgeting was a big issue. Prior to that, I did, as I mentioned, I did work for the Member of Parliament in the House of Commons. He was a parliamentary secretary to the Ministry of Industry under, of course, Stephen Harper. So I also helped run and budget government MP budgets and programs such as that. I did a lot of volunteer work through that. Here at Brooks, I worked for, I'm volunteer for Goxon Limited, I didn't volunteer, I volunteered. And I was the volunteer half a year for them. And yeah, that's my.
Thank you. Candidate Rayner.
I've owned a business in town for 32 years successfully. I've promoted other businesses with my advertising company. So promoting I know is important, and getting Brooks promoted on a provincial level to bring other businesses and industry to town is important to me. I think outside the box. I don't give up. The bill is away, I know I'll find it. Dealt with budgets, when to spend, when not to spend. You know, I'm always about the needs over wants, that's very important. You can spend a lot of money on the wants, it can be nothing for it. The other is I'm accessible. I have a business, I have a storefront. Everybody's welcome to come and talk to me there. I operate with integrity, transparency, guaranteed commitment. The other thing is, I sit on the Danielle Smith MLA Board in Brooks here, and you know, I get to bend your ear a little bit, and that was important to bring her around the community as a councillor and show her first time.
Candidate. Candidate Moss.
Mine's a little unique, and it's a little personal, but I think it's worth telling because it gives some perspective of where I'm from and what I've done. At 17 years old, 16 years old, I was a homeless kid. I came from the street, spent a little year on the street. And if you imagine all the stories that goes along with it, that's part of my history. So that led me to a rehab center at 17, and I've gratefully been clean and sobered for 31 years since that, with no hiccups or worries. That experience has driven me to feel like I've always owed to give something back to the people that gave me something so precious, which is my life. And so I volunteer as much as I possibly can. Like I mentioned in my own experience with football, Ashton's Place was heavy involved with that. And all of that gives me, I think, a perspective that would aid in making me a good councillor for Brooks.
Thank you. Candidate Phillips.
I'll start at the beginning. My background is in social work. Then my husband and I started Arden, which is a big business. You have financial ups and downs. You have to make decisions on the go, and you have to be focused by to survive. Then as a county councillor, I have experience with economic development and a key pillar of economic partnership. I was the chair of the municipal planning commission for years and chair of the assessment and field board. Tourism was one of my favorites, and I would still love to do that because tourism brings in people, brings in money, and it will support the local businesses.
Thank you. Candidate Moss.
Using my RCD background, I want to make Brooks a safer community to begin. Reduce the crime, work with the police and our bylaw on search and remove, make our traffic issues come to a halt, and make it, make all of our intersections more, more safer, more crosswalks, light crosswalks. And I was a Parks and Recreation Chair for quite a few years, for 90 years. And in there, we had a plan, making a walking path, like a bicycle path, all the way through our community. That will make it safer for our children, safer for people walking. I'd like to give a ball to that. And economically, I own several businesses in Brooks and am involved with several businesses here. Work with the community to be involved in when it comes down for the saving spend money on things that they develop for them.
And have the community. Thank you. Sorry. And candidate Falkenburg.
I am very quickly inexperienced, but I am very involved in the community. I volunteer a lot, as people that know me. I was a junior high football coach for a year, high school football coach for the last three years. I'm currently coaching the younger guys at Peewees Football. I've coached and been on a baseball, volleyball board for 12 years. Currently coach, we took our team to High School World. Been a scout leader and on the board, the program manager for 10 years. And I'm a hard owner of a group of companies that it's a board for four of us. So very experienced dealing with conflict and dealing with personalities and setting expectations. Yeah. I don't want to say more, but I don't want to say.
I don't want to risk getting cut off.
Looking at that clock right now.
Finally, candidate Perilio.
Yeah, I'm running for this position because of my longstanding commitment to community service and believing in the transparency, safe and strong local government. I want to bring my experience working with people in diverse backgrounds, in local organizations and local businesses, where I have the opportunity to hear the real needs. If elected, I will bring all these voices in shaping our future. Thank you.
And so the question that each of you will be given in a minute to respond to is, what are your plans and/or strategies for achieving financial sustainability while balancing service delivery, capital requirements, cost containment, and fair taxation levels? Again, you have 60 seconds each, and we begin with candidate Moss.
Well, that's a, that's a fall, isn't it? Can I just turn off the vent? That was a lot, I didn't get it all in depth, so. Sustainability, I guess I'll just point out a part of it. You know, we have to be, we have to look at it maybe with a different light than maybe past council for the last little bit. Last year was the greatest growth that Brooks had, with 1,000 people coming to Brooks and then we ran onto 17,000 people. I don't think we're sustaining those things properly. Doctors, we have 18, and we have 16, 17,000 people. We have 18 doctors. Tabor has 12, and they have 8,000 people. So I think it's, as a group, we're going to have to dig into this and look at all of the aspects. I don't really have an answer to it, there's definitely more to it, but we have to dig into it as a group.
Thank you. Candidate Rayner.
Please, a quick question there.
Sure. What are your plans and/or strategies for achieving financial sustainability while balancing service delivery, capital requirements, cost containment, and fair taxation levels?
So in semi-tax, money, you have to do the, again, the needs over the wants, cut the excess spending. I think the big thing, what I've been doing some research on, money for municipalities, is that there is a lot of federal and provincial money that could be utilized. We see that as, I think, eight different things that we can apply for in terms of, you know, saving money subsidies. The other thing is in the community, you know, we have, we have great businesses here. You know, businesses have stepped up in the past. If we can continue maybe asking businesses for some help on some things that maybe they can assist with. GBS is great for parks as an example, there's one of the field companies. I've talked to some people that, you know, do certain projects in town. So that's kind of where I would, I would sit on that.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
Thank you. I agree, it's quite an awful difficult question, so I'll try my best. Honestly, I think that we need to make, we need to have a hard look at the books. There's, something's not, something's not jiving. I think that a lot of the candidates are right, maybe they are spending things on wants instead of needs. I really strongly think that the way that we're going to grow and grow successfully is if we build housing, if we have infrastructure for economic development, and that starts with infrastructure. We really need to focus on that. I'm not going to lie to anybody, I don't think that there's going to be any opportunity to cut taxes, especially property taxes, because of the way that the capital budget has been set up for until, I think it's 2032. But I think that there's places that we can make a difference, and that we should be making a difference the more, the more industry we have here, the more sustainable jobs. I think it's better for everybody.
Thank you. Candidate Heck. Yeah, so for government accountability and sustainability, the first thing you need is transparency from your leaders. And they need to, I would like to have a transparency Tuesday where everybody could openly ask me on Facebook questions, and we pick something as a hot topic to address, so the citizens can have accountability with their government. For taxes, I think we need to invest in small businesses. Being a small business owner, I'm a little bit of a growth, even employing two more people makes a big difference in the town, and we can grow all of our small businesses. That will achieve growth, that will lead to large businesses wanting to come here, which will help lower our taxes. If we can increase both our commercial and our industrial taxes, we will, we will be able to maintain our current hit highs in the province residential max. Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Perilio.
Yeah, we have to make sure that we have to provide all our core services for it, which is infrastructure, safety, recreation, because those are the basic services that our community needs in order to thrive. And we also have to attract more investors to come and invest in our community because having investors will also create job opportunities for our residents. And in order to attract them, we have to provide incentives to our new, newly, new investors and also support them in terms of probably providing a gas pot or tax incentive so we will attract more people. Because in turn, we will be having all bigger tax base or more tax base in order for us not to increase our taxes all the time.
Thank you. Candidate Warder.
Thank you. It's about finding a balance, so it's about balancing investment and what we can afford. And you know, it's a little trick here when you get in there. One out of every $4 does not stay in town. One out of every $4 that we collect in revenue gets sent straight to Edmonton. So we don't, we have a very limited amount of money to provide a lot of services. And, and you know, infrastructure, absolutely, but all different kinds of infrastructure. Recreation and leisure activities are essential. You know, they're not, they can be framed as frivolous or wants over needs, but nobody ever stayed in a city because they had great sidewalks. We, we need to have a city that is alive and thriving and growing, that's interesting and that is connected. Like, that is why people stay in communities, that's what will grow, both socially and economically. That's what will grow Brooks.
Thank you. Candidate Moss.
Yeah, reiterating that everybody is set, we need more businesses and economic growth. To obtain that, we have the federal funding and provincial funding, various things out there. We have to work to get that. But we need to get large investors to come and invest into our community and figure out a way to try and get them coming into it. So back in the day, I was starting, I was in Habitat for Humanity. We had a problem with people that didn't have the funds to have a home. So I was on Habitat for Humanity for seven years, and we built four homes in Brooks and one in that company, and were able to give a helping hand to somebody that needed it. So we need to get something in that regard and have our taxpayers involved. If we're going to invest in something that we're going to spend money on, we need a taxpayer to be involved in.
Thank you. Candidate Pedros.
Thank you. Very good question. I'm going to try to make it very simple here. We have to increase our revenue, we have to lower our taxes. How do we increase our revenue? Growth of the community. We have done a lot in the last four years in terms of increasing the cost from a residential perspective, that is tax. We have to now focus on the business attraction. How do we do business attractions? We can provide, there are opportunities to provide bylaws that give 15, 15-year incentives for taxes, for example. There are things around taxation that we can do where we collect more taxes for commercial properties versus residential properties. That is how we increase our, growth is what is going to increase our revenues. On the other side, we have to lower our expenses. Understanding that first of all, just by inflation, only your costs are going to increase in terms of your expenditures, but how can we do it? That growth, that, that increase in the taxing or taxing.
Nice, that's, thank you. Candidate Falkenburg.
Being inexperienced, I don't intend that I understand fully what the city needs right now. But my plan is to work with the mayor and the councillors. But my plan is to work with the mayor and the councilors to figure out what those needs are. My decisions will be based on what the city infrastructure is required first and then any once after that. I will only decide to improve if they want to increase our taxes. I don't think there's anything we can do, but what's currently being spent. I do hate hearing that we have lost economic activity and investment in our community because we did not have the infrastructure to sustain. So that is definitely important to me and that will, that is the way I will be thinking when I make my decisions.
Thank you. Candidate Phillips.
Well, everything has been mentioned. The few things I have left that we should look at, a quick turnaround when people ask for permits or proposals. If they want to start a business, we shouldn't make them wait too long. It's gotta be done quickly and of course, smart. And with grants, which is very interesting, because I wrote that down too. There's lots of provincial and federal grants available. And I don't know if we can afford a grant wider, but maybe there's a staff member that has time available to look at grants and fill out those application forms.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Brian.
Lots of free ideas up here. In terms of financial stability, I wanna talk about something that I think is called the Booth Theory. So if you're placing things cheaply, it's not gonna last as long. And I think that that includes maintenance. If we're deferring our maintenance, it's gonna cost more the longer. Deferring infrastructure needs is gonna cost more the longer. Things aren't getting cheaper. They're getting more expensive every day. And we need to make sure we're maintaining what we have. And especially, everybody knows we need that tree and plant. Everybody knows there's lots of grants out there and there's lots of sponsorship opportunities. We need a council that's gonna go out there and make relationships and put forward proposals.
We will do a little follow-up. An opportunity to do a little follow-up to this particular topic. And we're gonna open the floor. And candidates will have thirty seconds. And you just have to be, just raise your hand and to be recognized and have a good opportunity to speak. We have a grand total of four minutes for this, so we'll get through what we can. But this is the question, and if you'd like to weigh in on this, this is the question. What would you like to see expanded, reduced, eliminated, or amended? And how would you engage the public in those decisions? And for fairness, I'll just read that again so that everybody can get it. What would you like to see expanded, reduced, eliminated, or amended? And how would you engage the public in those decisions? And candidate, you have thirty seconds.
I would like to see with the Brooks Studio High being built, I would like the football field slash soccer pitch to be a first-class amenity for our older, for all ages. It works anyone from elementary right through to adulthood. I would like to have a scoreboard, turf, and lights and announcements, like at the baseball, like the same for, I'd like to improve our soccer and our football.
Thank you. Councilor, your turn.
Thank you. For me, I think service levels that the municipality gives is different to different people. But the one that I'm gonna focus on is community development. We need to bring business to this community to be able to grow our tax base.
Yes, put it.
Hi, I would like to see, I know that recent reporting from our newspaper says that our crime has gone down. But we all know that some of us are feeling unsafe. So I would like to see some more patrols in our walking paths at night or some other sort of service in our parks so we can make sure that they're safe, they're clean, and they're able for all of our residents to be able to use.
Candidate Falkenburg.
I'd like to see us grow our pride in our community. There's lots of ways that we can do that specifically. Like you mentioned, is having a sporting field in our, in town to be proud of. So a sporting field that our kids can be proud of. Something that our kids can look back and be proud that they're from our community. It's not just the sporting field. There's other things that we can do. But that very specifically, obviously, as a coach, that kind of reminds me that I'm gonna have that.
And candidate Redner.
I'd like the broadband eliminated. I realize that people will say that we do need it for growth. However, there are people that will do it a lot better than us. Shaw's already in the basketball park. Tels has their own backbone that they can tap into ours. Six point three million dollars that invests at a three percent which is three miles in the bank, that'd be a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year versus the two thousand dollars a year that people. So the responsibility of going forward, any core fixes, maintenance.
Time, sorry. And candidate Aurelio.
Yeah, I want to expand services related to safety, peace, and order in the community. I want to eliminate implications in services so we will save some money there. I also want to reduce red tape so that we can have our permits faster. If there are amendments in the budget, we have to make sure it will be transparent so taxpayers will know why and how we are spending these amendments.
Thank you. Candidate Orford.
I just wanna point out about the Brooksnet. You know, Brooksnet is an example of long-term infrastructure that we have managed to get our hands on. Grant money, and actually the number is five point four nine eight is where our budget is at. That is a real concrete example of something that will bring long-term revenue. You know, we've got, we're not at the amount of revenue collection that we want to be, but just like any new business venture, it takes some time to turn profit.
And that's time. And candidate Johnson.
So I just kinda wanna, I'm gonna dip my toe into the Brooksnet real quick. I understand that's grant money. It actually came from what they call the old gas tax grant money. Just so everybody is clearly aware, that money could have been used for infrastructure, it could have been used for roads, it could have been used for a water treatment facility, it could have been used for sewage. It wasn't specific to telecommunications.
And that's time. Thank you all for weighing in on that. So we're going to move to a new topic, and this one is on business competitiveness. And so the question is, what measures or strategies would you implement to encourage businesses to move to and invest in Brooks? And what industries would you believe would be beneficial to attract to the Brooks region? And I'll repeat that again, because it's a bit of a mouthful. So what measures or strategies would you implement to encourage businesses to move to and invest in Brooks? And what industries would you believe would be beneficial to attract to the Brooks region? At this time, we'll start with candidate Brian.
I'm not too experienced on what measures we can, we can use. But I do know that one thing that I think would help us would be tourism. We're centrally located. Pick a direction and you can end up on a nice highway. And we're not capitalizing on that. If you drive by Brooks, it's just a spot on the map. And I, and I feel like we're missing a lot of Brooks pride. Are you saying to your friends, "I live in a nice place"? Or are you saying, "I live in a sticky place"? And that distresses me greatly. We have a nice place, and I think that we really need to work on our tourism and in our own community, our pride.
Thank you. And each candidate does have a minute for this, and this is, so this is a new section. You don't have to raise your hand for this. I'll call you in random order. It's good. Everybody gets a chance. So candidate Falkenburg.
Go back to pride in our community. So there's a lot, there's a lot of money that leaves our community, whether it be shopping in Calgary, Leucre, Medicine Hat, online, money sent overseas. I think if we can somehow encourage or create an identity for ourselves, create some community pride, some sense of urgency that it's important that we support each other. It's important that we support businesses in town. I don't think, I don't think businesses are looking to invest in our community because so many people are leaving their community to spend. So I'll just, I'll just go back to that. I think it's just community pride, but more just to keep that money global.
Thank you. Candidate Post.
There are industries that have, I'd like to see, we can pursue more and more of an agricultural base in our, around our area here. We do have lots of land, and we have, we need water. And we have a work center here that the company has taken over. I'd like to see some, something like the Old College that they have for agriculture. And we have primary highways here, and we have a railway here that we can transport whatever we can get economic development with, with any kind of business cutting in. I'd like to see the college here having a trade, trades coming in, like nursing and mechanical engineering, that kind of things. So we could put up with all that trades coming in and open that up.
Thank you. Candidate Moss.
Oh, sorry. I believe we have to try and attract home builders to invest in Brooks. With a thousand people coming in in the last, you know, last year, 2024, there definitely wasn't a thousand homes built or a thousand residents built. So I think we need to do what we can to attract home builders. I'm kind of, the affordable housing thing, I think, has been beaten down. I'm not really, I don't like the word it. I think we need to build homes, and affordable housing can be part of that one. But we need to have all levels of, and pricing of homes available to the public, from the, you know, the higher end all the way through. And I think if we build one higher-end home, everybody kind of hoots up the ladder and leaves, and affordable housing at the bottom. So I would say everything we can do to try to attract as many home builders as investors into the city.
Thank you. Candidate Orford.
I think a couple things. First of all, would be having that competitive infrastructure. Like, for example, our Brooksnet, that five works, is actually listed on the provincial portal for where businesses can look at what services do, does this community offer? And that makes us, I guess, a competitive edge. The other thing would be, yeah, retaining people. People will not, businesses won't stay, people won't stay in the community. So we need to make our community an attractive, affordable place, adequate housing, so that businesses have a sustainable, predictable market to work with. And then the other thing is relationship building. Our economic development team, our department, has done an excellent job in this regard. Building those relationships, reaching out to, you know, come work with us. We're flexible. We will have adaptable policies and bylaws in order to make our environment the most competitive possible.
Thank you. Candidate Aurelio.
I really want to encourage more businesses to invest in Brooks, but we have to support them as well while we are, while we're trying to attract new businesses. We have to support our existing local businesses. I really want to have the trajectory of all the businesses that are thriving in Brooks or existing in Brooks. That way, for example, if people will be, like say, like groupers, contractors, they will just scan and search any apps in order for them to see all the businesses that are existing here. That way, people will not be going out of our community, but will be spending all their money here. Because what happens if people go bolt out even just for a single item, they will buy everything outside of Brooks. And what happens is, the money that should be spent in our community will be spent outside, and it's not our local businesses that are benefiting from it.
Thank you. Candidate Redner.
Brooks has a lot of talented people in the city. I think if we can build on that for what they can do to promote their abilities, to bring other businesses into town. You know, we have businesses that are in town that take their finishing product and send it out of town to get that. If we can find those people that can now bring that finishing service and open that up in Brooks. I also think for the youth, we need to have a program in place to find programs that can take the youth and train them for jobs, you know, jobs outside of GBS, who just the labor of that. The, Paul's reading my notes, he saw what I was saying. And also, being that we have Danielle, I've talked with her in the last minute. I would ask her about some of the things that, or the products that are in our home. And I think that that does value to have that.
That's time. Thank you. And candidate, your turn.
Oh, I feel that we kind of need a salesman for Brooks. As Carly mentioned, when you talk to anyone from out of town, there's always a smelly spot, I'm number one. I don't think that attracts anyone, or tourism, or business. It's not that we can fix the smell out there, but we can rebrand ourselves through tourism. We have one of the best man-made lakes right here. We can expand on our fishing, our whirl. And we can work with our fellow municipalities and townships around us, like Patricia, Rolling Hills, everybody, to make collaborative tourism for all of our municipalities work together instead of competing on the same weekend and try to attract everyone to different events. I would also think we need people retention in order to maintain businesses. And I agree with the two gentlemen down there. I'm in favor of the idea of trying to figure out how to make the Brooks College into a more useful local trades program or something that benefits the community to keep the youth.
And that's time. Thank you. Candidate Iris.
Thank you. I think we need a holistic approach. Everything that was said is good. We need to, first of all, as you mentioned, we need to go out and ask businesses, what is going to attract them to Brooks? What do they need to have in terms of infrastructure, in terms of incentives, in terms of all these things that we provide? That's number one. Number two, we need to find some sort of one-point contact for businesses. Some businesses talk about the idea that needing to go to licensing somewhere is, we need to go to bylaws somewhere else. So if we can find one office, and our current office could be that office. Then we need to think about the quality of luck that they're gonna get with their equipment. I've talked about that, but whether it is housing, whether it is school, whether it is recreation, how all of that fit into the idea of attracting new businesses here. And finally, the taxing incentives we talked about. I think we need to take into that really seriously. In terms of businesses that we can bring, food manufacturing, the culture was talked about, warehousing, green energy, many of these is the time to move up.
It's time. Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
I think that, I probably didn't last, so I probably don't get any new ideas of, but I'll try. I think that we do need population growth to bring more businesses here that make us more attractive. I think that that growth needs to be more responsible than it has been. I think we're seeing a housing shortage, and we're trying to throw up houses that maybe don't always make sense. And I understand that we're at a shortage, and I get that. But I think it needs to be a little bit more responsible. I'm a little confused why we're not currently looking for active investment in Brooks. I did read an article a couple of months ago that AI superhubs were looking to invest sixty billion dollars in the province of Alberta. I really think that that's an opportunity that we could have had for building warehouses that are relatively low cost and we could have had sustainable jobs and then therefore helped with growth and housing.
Thank you. Finally, candidate Phillips.
Sorry. So what I said earlier is that if conditions are right, the business will come. We have an economic development department that works with the county rule. They pay half of it. And they, they do go out and they tell people, investors, what we have to offer. And ultimately, it's up to the business to decide if they wanna come here. Purging again, and the approval process needs to be quick. If a business is interested, you have to get that visa or done, so they'll, they'll stay. And we have Highway One, we have Highway Thirty-Six. We have a railroad going to a town. We're just set up, perfect for, for economic development.
So what do you believe to be an effective strategy for economic development moving forward to nurture economic growth and ensuring the city retains a healthy business environment for both existing and new business? And again, I'll repeat that. What do you believe to be an effective strategy for economic development moving forward that would nurture economic growth? that would nurture economic growth and ensure that the city retains a healthy business environment for both existing and new business? And again, I would just invite you to raise your hand if you want to wave in on this, and you have 30 seconds to use for. For post.
I think that we, if we could also expand on our tourism within Brooks, trying to bring in, like, more, more cat rounds and more facilities for people to come. We have a beautiful lake here, and we can work with the EID, try to expand that lake. I know over the years, I know developers here, and try to put some housing around the lake.
And that's time. Thank you. Any others? Go ahead, candidate Wardro.
Strategy for economic growth and retention. I think, you know, a, a couple of things have already been said in terms of creating the conditions, like having people, having our community an attractive place to, to stay. But also, you know, once we have those businesses, how do we keep them here? And one thing I think that can be improved is communication. This is talking directly to council. What do you need? What is working? What is not working? You know, we don't want to get in the same room with people.
Candidate Idris.
Thank you. I think that, I think we need to work with ourselves as a region, what can we provide businesses? Collaboration. It was mentioned here, we have different communities around us. Each come with, whether it is, whether it is infrastructure, whether it is water, whether it is energy. So all of these things coming together and be presenting ourselves as a region to investors would be the way to do. We need to focus on both attraction and retention, because yes, we can retain.
So everybody's touching on tourism, bringing people here, and our best promoters of that are the people that live here. And what's eaten at me over the last years, many years, is, is the lack of love for our community, or outwardly love for our community. So we're not big promoters of ourselves. Why is that? I just wish, wish we could find a way that we can all just figure that out. So whether that be festivals or what have you, but just showing our people love. I think that starts at the top here.
I'm just getting.
I think it has to go back to basics sometimes. We all want tourism, we all want that, like every, every city does. But if we don't have doctors to, to fill that void, if I was a business looking at Brooks and go, well, if I go there, there are any short doctors. There are only two emergency people. Like, I think that needs to be addressed right from the basic. You know, how were they retaining doctors before? And we're not doing that now.
Candidate Ryan.
To the chamber for this forum, they, they called it the 2025 Vote of Prosperity, and they had four pillars listed on the website, and I think they apply here. Accountable government, a healthy community, partnership, and competitiveness. And I, I think that we need to keep those in mind.
Go ahead. I'm a good question.
I would like to advertise our city more by organizing events and recreations that will promote our city. Like, for example, we are square full of City of Hunter the Loos, so there will be other connections outside of us. And last night, we also organized a intercity league, and we were able to bring 26 teams from different cities outside of Brooks. And that, that brings, the books, Brooks hotels were booked, the, our creation centers are full, and then we also have them support our local businesses. So those are one, something that we can do in order for people to come to Brooks. And also, I would like to add more events that the people could.
That's time. Thank you. Sorry. All right. So thank you for that. I know those 30 seconds will run really quickly. So thank you for your responses. So we move now to our last topic and question, based on that topic. And this question is based on building healthy communities. And so the question is, and many of you probably talked a little bit about this, but in Brooks, in Canada more broadly, pressure on affordable housing has never been higher. What is your approach to ensuring that Brooks retains options for sustainable and affordable housing? And I'll repeat that again. In Brooks, in Canada more broadly, pressure on affordable housing has never been higher. What is your approach to ensuring that Brooks retains options for sustainable and affordable housing? And again, you'll have, each of you will have a minute to answer this, and we'll begin with candidate Wardro.
So in, our council this term has gotten really aggressive on, on this front because housing, affordable housing is essential. It's critical to keep our community intact. We have had policies, bylaws that take, starting with, sort of, attract investment by totally relieving 100% of property taxes for the first year, a 75% of 50% in 25%. Selling land for very, very competitive prices. That has resulted in us approving 400 dwelling unit builds, $88 million of investment in housing here in Brooks. So I think how that happened is we were adaptable, we listened, we were responsive. And so whatever the conditions are, my approach will be, will be that as well. And if conditions change, then so too will be.
Thank you. Candidate Philanson.
Tax and, tax incentives are, are good. That's what the city is always doing, so we can continue it up. Again, I have to say, you know, the paperwork needs to be quick, the permits. The city could also look maybe infill. There's empty lots, there are some abandoned houses. Like, is there anything we can do with that to get a developer to, to look at that lot and maybe build a duplex instead of the one house that's there?
Thank you. Candidate Aurelio.
We have to diversify our housing, which means that our housing should be there to the needs of our community for those that are young families, to those, to our seniors, and to the low income. Housing is a basic necessity, and we have to make sure that everybody in Brooks can afford the housing that is fit in their situation. And also, we have to help our develop, our developers by giving them a more non-confusing permits, when they apply for permits, so they, so they won't be wasting more time, effort to build more housing. And that way, they will have the waiting time, and we'll be supporting them to in building more houses for our residents.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
Absolutely. We need to have more housing. That's, that's a no-brainer. Everybody knows that. I think it needs to be done responsibly. I think we need to have conscious thought regards to parking, in regards to proper green spaces, in regards to proper street wits, in regards to where we're going to have people go in in busy stations, collector leagues, all that sort of thing. But also, we need to look at the properties that we do have. I think that we do have some larger rental corporations that are currently in town. I think we could do with some facelifts on some of those, those buildings that shall not be mentioned. And just, if we could lay out our own backyards, hopefully, the new builds will have the backyards as well.
Thank you. Candidate Mont.
Yeah, I kind of touched on this earlier, for affordable housing things, you know, it's across the board. Everybody's trying to catch up to that and build houses. But I believe that if we take the time to look at some of the communities that are very much thriving right now, they're actually not building affordable housing. Landen is a perfect example. The cheapest house that they currently build in Landen is $650, and they're putting a house on the market every day, one house. And so if you drive by there, it is absolutely growing up in the houses. But I believe what that does, when you build homes like that, you open up every home below, all the way down to the floor. Each person doesn't buy latterly, they buy up. So by building different levels of home and not hyper focusing on affordability, you, you open the market to everybody having an opportunity to move into a new home or to move into a home that they, they want to start with.
Thank you. Candidate Rayner.
Investors and developers. You see, or people say there's, nobody wants to come to Brooks to work. I think our latest storm has proven that with every signs on every corner, people want to do your roofie aside and all that. So if there is work here, people will come. I mean, Brooks has 54 vacant lots that the city owns right now that are worth $3.3 million. I talked to one developer, and he said he was paying $54,000 a lot. Went to the city, said, I'll buy three or four, can I get a deal, $35,000? They said, no. My suggestion, and I asked him this straight out, I said, if the city would give you $35,000 a lot, how many would you buy? He wants them on one side, the other side. He says, I'll buy 10, and I'll buy 10. I said, okay, so if I sold them to you for $35,000 a lot, but I taxed you as though there was $250,000 a home on there, would you still do that? And he said, I'll take 20 lots. So that's giving $35,000 a lot, plus it's giving you $2,500 per year taxes until he builds on it. That's a brilliant straight.
Candidate Post.
Yeah, I agree with what Mike said, but we, we do have investors in Brooks already that have large pieces of property, and they are always ready to develop. And we just need to work with them and to expand. And there's lots of property that's around Brooks that the city can buy when the funds are available to expand it, so that's all the housing, and that can all work and work with the developers coming here.
Thank you. Candidate Hatt.
Yeah, I feel we need to build more starter homes, lower end, or lower end of the top end is a scippier point. And that only drives the market higher and higher with the top end homes in Greystone and such. Whereas if we can develop our low-end market, we can keep that as one stable rate and develop our mid-end, top end at the same time. It's not worth having anyone back. But building all these houses, whether it's duplexes, coreplexes, or anything else, requires a sustainable development. Parking is an issue already with rentals and some of the landlords we have running these rental places, and who they, how many people they allow to occupy a place is creating a big strain on our individual small community. We need, so we need responsible growth. We need proper roads, proper parking, and get rid of rent tape to help developers purchase the land and expand more housing for us.
Thank you. And candidate Idris.
Thank you. Again, very good ideas. It's all these ideas that are truly needed. Council works from a governance place, and one of the very first things that we have done when we came to council last year is we looked at our bylaws in terms of land use, in terms of other, other issues of housing. And we have changed many of those to make it less restrictive, to make it able to do many of the things that we have done in the last couple of years, just like tax incentives and all of that. We have also worked, and we will continue to work with organizations that are trying to provide affordable housing. We have given a lot to the Brooks Housing Society, we have given a lot to Habitat for Humanity. Some of the things I want to think about for the future is maybe options around outstanding loans and, and, and giving maybe options for developers around, I'm not asking, I'm not saying we take them off, but we will provide that. Another option is maybe higher taxes on empty lots. If you have a lot that you are not, you are not developing, maybe you should pay higher taxes.
Thank you. Candidate Ryan.
I agree with, I agree with most of the ideas out there, all the ideas, really. But I think that we need to remember and prioritize those smaller, single-family homes, the smaller lots. There's still young families out there chasing the ever increasingly difficult dream of being a homeowner. And if we can provide that, those young families will, and the seniors will pass us over for communities that will provide that. I know it took me and my husband three years of being in my parents' house to be able to afford what we have. So it's, it's hard out there.
Thank you. Candidate for Post.
I don't have a fully educated answer on this per se. I know it's a, it's a difficult situation. Developers have to want to come here. They're extremely busy in larger centers like Calgary, Edmonton, so what's the incentive for them to be here? I, I highly approve of what the city did to try to attract builders for apartment buildings. We, it was something that we absolutely needed, but I think there's more that we can do for housing developments as well. So I, I don't know what that, that, again, how that answer is, but possibly making a deal on these properties. We need the house. Losing a few thousand dollars on, on the property, so it's a big deal. And the next thing would be railtors, having railtors promote these empty lots. I don't see the city doing that now, but I see a potential for the future.
I mean, I know some investors and developers that are in Brooks that are ready to do that.
And that's time. Thank you. And candidate Wardro.
I think when we have worked with affordability in the community, it's, it's always a balance. So if we need to cut from somewhere, we gain from somewhere else and vice versa. One thing I would like to explore would be something like public transit. So that's something outside, that would be an, an investment in, in a service that would provide an element of affordability for many of our residents.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to weigh in on this? Yes.
It's good that we are focusing to an affordability, but we should not forget that it should be at this and home as well, because this is the place we will be raising our children. This is, will be the place where we are, we'll be calling our homes. And we all know that, for, it is true that charging against a home, so it has to be the best place where we will be raising our kids.
Thank you. Any other? Anybody else want to wave in on that? If not, thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I think I'll only have time for one. And so I'll just read the question, this comes from our audience. And again, we'll open the floor after the question, and give you 30 seconds to respond. We've been seeing many small businesses close in town over the past few years, making some predict that Brooks would become a ghost town in which people need to go return. How can we prevent this from continuing?
Oh, it's through youth retention, keeping our people of Brooks here in Brooks. Not sending them away to get educated, and it trains in holes where they end up moving to rent here or staying there. If we can keep our people, train our people, they will stay here, they'll raise their families here, they'll meet their girls here or their boys here, and we will grow our town with our own people.
When a small business closes, it's, it could either be through retirement, or maybe the business wasn't as profitable, or a young lady with children that thought she could do a book, and then it was harder. So if economic development can, could maybe help a person like that, with a small business, to identify a owner or a new partner or new money for it.
Candidate Holterberg.
Just beat a dead horse here. Businesses aren't going to stay open if we, without thinking, just have no problem leaving our community, spending money. Again, we have to create an environment where, where we feel bad for doing that. We want our money here in town, so that's the only way that our businesses are going to survive.
Candidate Johnson.
Well, as, as a city council, I don't think that we can budget the small businesses, but we can hopefully provide them the supports to succeed. I think that's a big issue. If we do that, it's no crowd, or if we give those $10,000 grants to new businesses, if they put up a pitch in, and I think we have to make sure that we are doing that stuff. I don't think that we support them with a handout every, every year of that, but kickoff for a fresh shirt, absolutely.
Thank you. Candidate Idris.
I think we all, as cities, also need to do our part, and I think you touched on this a number of times, the idea of being proud of our community and spending our money in our community. I know it's a small thing, but there was a project of the Chamber, the Chamber Bus, where, where there was a grant that was put forward by the current development, where you buy $100 for $19 a day, and then you use it here. If we can incentivize people and get them to shop here, that would be the start.
Candidate Wardro.
I think, I think one piece is, I think there's lots of great candidates here, but it's, it's actually real communication and then gathering that data. Because anecdotal evidence is one thing, like we have feeling, you know, lots of things are closing down. But like, we need to know why, like actually why. Was it a retirement? Was it a lack of, like a, a smaller market than you anticipated? How can the city help?
Thank you. Candidate Orio?
Yeah, we have to equip our businesses with the current trends. Brooks has evolved into a different community, let's say, a few years ago. And it has, they have to know about the current trends that reflects the needs of the community. That way they can innovate what else to add to their businesses in order to reflect and add continued growth as a business.
Go ahead, Smallwood?
I'll just add one more thing, is that this needs to be planned as well. Because otherwise, we're just constantly reacting to crisis. So if we have a plan, a communication plan, you're constantly going to come back, come to the table, "How are we doing? Do we have policies that are out of date?" Maybe we do. But it needs to come to us on a regular basis and not just when, when things are in crisis.
Thank you all, and we're out of time at that. So now we get to the portion of the forum where we allow you to make some closing statements. And you have a luxury of time here, people, you have a whole minute and a half. So, and we're going to do this in reverse order from our opening statements. So with a minute and a half on the clock, and we'll begin with closing statements by end of the hour.
Thank you. So Brooks is going to need strong, stable, experienced leadership. And then into the next four years, we are going to achieve the goals that we have. And we need a team. It needs to be a team approach. We need a group of people around the table that are really committed to the hard work that it is to be another good official, but with team players. People who are carrying their weight, people who are communicating. We need to be on the same page, having our best interests at heart. And we know the thrill and the success of what it's like when you are on a team like that. And that's, that's what I, that's what I want to offer. I am a team player. I, I, I do want to be part of that team that builds prior to our community, that increases competitiveness for our economy, and creates a livable place where people don't want to leave. And I, I hope I add your support on October 20th. And please reach out to me if you have any further questions for me afterward.
Thank you. Candidate Ritter?
Tonight was a little bit like speaking, and for those sentiments of our concerns and our solutions, it all sounds appealing, but now it's time to pick your seats. Uh, over just about 10 minutes of presentation, that does not tell our entire story. I've proven over 32 years of success in business. I make decisions based on common sense. I'm a numbers guy. Running a city comes down to dollars and cents. At the end of the day, if you manage them properly, you can afford the quality of the needs and afford the wants, and the wants have to be for the masses. We need to promote housing development, bring business to the city, make our community safer, clean up our community. We need to strive for beautiful and bountiful as our city crest. I commit to doing this with integrity, transparency, with a business-like approach. The same approach I've taken over the past 32 years. I offer this with true representation, true accessibility, and I look forward to working with the six candidates, six of us.
Thank you. Candidate Post?
For me, given what my goals are, that I would like to be involved in, but we just need to achieve a common goal, what we all want to do, and we've all said we'd like to do, take businesses. But basically, I think our businesses is mostly like a, we have here is a service industry. Our retail business is very, very difficult. And I own a couple of retail businesses. And when you're competing against large businesses that are in, like your Home Depots and your Amazon, you know, and I know myself that I buy parts and that from Allied and that, and then you have a automobile part that's worth this, pick up Amazon, third of the price. People are buying off of Amazon, and they're getting it delivered right to their door. So retail business is tough to get the business going here, back in Brooks. Unless the service industry can serve the people, so that we have to do that. And my biggest goal is to have a safe community. And have all the community members of the, in Brooks to work together and be neighbors.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson?
Pick a team that can respectfully work together to keep Brooks a great place to live in. Make sure you phone, tell them to retire.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. One of the big things I think that I would like to do is that as a councillor, to change the language a little bit, how we approach taxes. Uh, I think a lot of politicians in general just think taxes are a number and the citizens pay that. But I believe taxes are investing in the city that they live in because they can choose to live anywhere. So I want to change how we approach that and see it as an investment. And our decisions about that investment need to reflect the idea that they want to feel good about their investment. Are, right now, I've asked this question a lot, do people feel good about their investment in Brooks? And the answer is, is no, they're not. They don't see the payout, they don't see that, that end of their investment. So I would love to change that approach and language within my own position and the people, hopefully, upon council, the people around me. For the past city council, I want to know if they, and I've felt from them, I've talked to them, that some feel they just did enough. And the new council needs to do more than enough. Yes, I think everyone out there is capable of doing the job that's required of a councillor. But what we need is people that will stand on the scalpel box and do the extra, fight for this town within the province. We need that in Brooks, that has to happen.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson?
Well, thank you very much for listening to just a little bit of what I believe in. I think majority of us all agree on a lot of the parts. Uh, we need to focus on fiscal responsibility. We've seen a lot of projects that in our brains probably were way over a budget that we thought was reasonable. We need to focus on responsible growth. We have to have a priority on infrastructure, our water treatment, our sewage, a priority on economic growth. We have to focus on good, sustainable jobs for our residents. We have to have safe streets for our kids, for our moms and our seniors, where they feel safe at night. Uh, we need to focus on some stuff to keep our young adults, our older teens, in our community. They're going to be our next generation of workers and business owners, and the people that are going to make our economy thrive. And I think we kind of leave them out to pasture a little bit. I've heard a lot of great ideas on this panel tonight. Some of them had four years of opportunity, and I've just heard some new stuff now. I wish they had brought it in four years ago. Um, but I think that we need to, to work together and have a great town that we all want to love.
Thank you. Candidate Divers?
Thank you. Brooks is on a growth trajectory. The last four years, we were able to create investments to build about 480 units in our community. This is the time to keep that investment going. This is the time, this is the time to keep that momentum going and have a generic idea of what we want this community to look like. My priorities, my vision for this community focuses on three areas. Manage growth. We need to grow in our residents. We need to grow in our businesses. We need to grow in the services that we provide. We need growth in our community. Also, my second priority is on smart investments. Whether it is infrastructure, whether it is quality of life, whether it is youth programming, whether, we need smart investments to be able to achieve that, go with that growth. And then finally, we need to reach a place where we are having sustainable affordability. I think taxes this year for you could be something that we would all be happy with, but how can we have that sustainably? How can we have that only for this year? We do that by having a long-term plan. We have 10 years master plans, we have three years budget cycle. This is the way we do it. I hope I have proven the last four years that I'm thoughtful, I am fair, and I'm someone that will listen to everyone and make the best decision for this community. I hope you're pumped.
Thank you. Candidate Hatt?
Hello. My main objective to bring to our city, again, our safety for our streets. I want our city-funded areas to be clean and usable by our local residents, so we don't have to travel to another city to use these exact same facilities that we offer here, but they're just inhumane to use at points. Uh, I want open transparency on spending. I hear things like this BrooksNet, the cost is just short of $7 million. We only have 700 people signed up, we're grossing less than $2,000 a month. This is an internet infrastructure that will be outdated and obsolete for 10 years without spending more money on upkeep and existence. Uh, I do not feel Brooks should be in the business of running telecom communication business. It's just going to run us in a hole. Nobody in the prior council has ever worked in a telecommunications in a management position. Uh, our current council also feels that grant money is free money, and they don't realize it was taken from you in tax, given to the provincial and provincial government, then backed out to the municipal level. I don't feel your tax money is being spent responsibly, being respected, and we need a complete change. I would say de-elect, not re-elect anyone in council. It's time to have change. Check for hats!
Thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you. Candidate Holter?
How can I follow that? So, I'm not doing this to be a politician, even though I know that's what I would be if I didn't like it. I'm not doing this for fame or fortune. Um, I'm doing this just because I feel like our community needs somebody like myself, my experience, to help make decisions that are prudent financially for our city's economy to afford in the future. Hopefully, many times that I spoke about our community pride and how important that is for us, got through, and hopefully support my position and support me at that level of us.
Thank you. Candidate Brian?
I'm here because I believe city council needs some representation from some of our families. I offer a new fresh productive and a proactive versus reactive approach. I'm a promoter of Brooks, a supporter of Brooks. I want to stay in Brooks, retire in Brooks, die in Brooks. Raise my hands to be proud of Brooks. Yes, I'm inexperienced, but I've learned a lot in this time. I'm a quick study. I met some truly awesome people this past month. And elected or not, I'm going to be more involved from now on. You'll see me around. So, nice to meet you. My name is Charlie Bryant. I love Brooks.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Orio?
Yes, this is the cool thing. I would like first to thank Chamber of Commerce for facilitating this, and for everyone being here tonight. Thank you so much for dedicating your time. I really appreciate everyone who put their names forward, which means a lot, that you care so much about our community. The community, um, this job requires a team of people that are dedicated in order to make a change that we decide on how we want this community to be. I also want to make this community to be as safe, affordable, as sustainable. I want this community still to be a community of choice for people who wants to raise this family, for people who wants to live here, and for people who wants to work here. And to close, I just want to let everyone know that I wanted every voice in Brooks to be valued, to be respected, and to be empowered. Just like my slogan says, empowering voices, delivering change. And with that, I want to say, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So that brings almost our forum to a close. So I want to just take this opportunity to thank all of the candidates for their participation tonight and for their willingness to participate in the civic process. And I think we owe all of them a round of applause. And I'd also want to remind all of you to check the Chamber website to see tonight's forum. And also, any additional questions and answers the candidates may respond to. And so with that, we will conclude session one, and we'll take a quick intermission. Uh, we will be back and start promptly at 8 o'clock for the, for the, for the main event with the mayors. And so as we settle stage for the next round, we would like to invite our two mayoral candidates to join us backstage. And Washington, you just saw it down the hall, and thank you, it's 8 o'clock.
Bueno, este man Carlos ha terminado la primera parte del debate con los concejales. Se vio bien fuerte, me gustó mucho en la organización de la cámara y comercio porque se manejaron los tiempos. Mientras se manejen los tiempos, yo creo que hay orden en la sala y todo el público puede entender realmente cuáles fueron las propuestas.
Yes, so we have amazing organization from Chamber of Commerce, the Southern Alberta. And the most amazing thing was that everything was on time. Every single minute was respected by the candidates, which is amazing because everybody took the right time, and that really make easy the event. And the other thing is that this is just the councillor, the candidates for the council of Brooks area. So now we're going to have a wonderful thing, what we're going to have right now?
Muy bien, y ahora lo que viene es los dos candidatos que hay para la alcaldía de Brooks. Aquí va a haber un debate, vamos a ver si logra subirse las energías o la energía, pues vamos a ver cómo están los candidatos, y esta sí es la prueba reina. Entonces, quédense muy atentos porque viene el debate de los candidatos, los dos, Norm y Joel. Ya ustedes lo estuvieron en eRadio, ya ustedes pudieron enviar un primer debate. Ahora van a ver otro debate y vamos a ver qué tan caliente está esta puesta en el ring, señor.
Yes, for you guys, for the audience of eRadio Global, so we're going to have right now the debate from, between Norm and also from Joel. Which is the two candidates that we have for mayor of City of Brooks. So you already, guys, have these candidates in the previous debate from eRadio Global, but right now, we're going to have the big part of this event tonight.
Pues esta es una transmisión de eRadioglobal.com, no te desconectes porque ya venimos con este debate.
This is eRadio Global Worldcasting, and stay tuned because coming up, the debate from two candidates for mayor of City of Brooks.